I'd like to call Public Safety Emergency Management Committee to order at 6:45. Myself, Councilor Lavoy and Councilor Angelo, we just have one motion this evening. From the docket of November 4th, 2025, I entertain a motion to transfer $15,000 from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Police Professional Services.
Second.
Thank you. This is for a, it's called an assessment center, so it's a testing process that is negotiated by the police union, so candidates can go through this. And it seems like a good thing. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I'd like to call for an adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at 6:45, sorry, 6:46.
I call Human Resources and Veterans Committee to order at 6:46. Councilors present, Councilor Tavares and Councilor Waterman. I have one motion tonight from the docket of October 21st, 2025, entertain a motion to transfer $1,000 from account 12921000-513100, Animal Control Holiday/Vacation Sick Overtime to account 12921000-519922, Animal Prior Year Article 22 stipend.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Tavares. So basically, this was, as we've seen in the mayor's communication, was for the senior animal control officer that had filled in for times that he wasn't supposed to be working, and he is part of, he's part of the new compensation division, so this is the way for him to be compensated. That was deemed part of the contract with the new, with the new compensation package. Any questions?
No.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. All right. I'd like to call for adjournment at 6:47.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Tavares. All right. We're adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Vote.
Oh, oh, all right. Call for an adjournment, 6:47.
You have to vote on adjournment.
Yeah. No, I'm calling for an adjournment at 6:47.
We call that a second.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Sorry, it's been a long day.
I would like to call this meeting of the municipal council to order at 6:48. Please join me for a salute to the flag. Applause. To the flag, I believe in the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Where it is an election night, we do not have any public hearings this evening. I would entertain a motion to go into committee of the whole.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We now in committee of the whole, if anyone has any piece of business they wish to bring before the municipal council. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to arise from committee of the whole.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We have now arisen from committee of the whole. We will now go into a reading of the mayor's communication.
Dear Municipal Council, I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the following appointments to the cultural council, term to expire February 2028. Neftali Augustine, Lara Haju, Richard Gamble, Benjamin Challett, Julian Culver, and Allison Tataro.
Human Resources and Veterans, please.
Two, I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the appointment of Thomas Moran to fill an unexpired term on the council on aging, term to expire February 2028.
Human Resources and Veterans, please.
Three, I respectfully submit a communication from library director Amy Rillinger regarding office equipment that the library would like to surplus. There is no interest in this office equipment from any of the departments. Therefore, I hereby request to your honorable body to declare the following as surplus and available for disposition. Typewriters fair, CD cleaner machine works intermittently, VCR operable, hotspots are operable, tablets and iPads inoperable, LCD projector works intermittently, printers inoperable, laptops poor, keyboards and mice operable, computer speakers operable.
City property and claims, please.
Four, I respectfully submit a communication from Atterboro Public Schools Director of Finance, Brittany Perella, regarding costs related to transportation. The school department is seeing a continuation of an upward trend in the number of students requiring specialized transportation services for both in district and out of district placement as they begin the fiscal year '26 school year. As you know, MGL Chapter 40, Section 13E, requires a majority vote of the municipal council before expenditures from the SPED Special Purpose Stabilization Fund can be dispersed. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body approve expenditures of no more than $400,000 from the SPED Stabilization Fund 8507 for unexpected special education transportation costs incurred during fiscal year '26. A vote was unanimously passed at the school committee meeting on October 20th, 2025.
Finance committee, please.
Five, I respectfully submit a communication from Atterboro Public Schools Director of Finance, Brittany Perella, regarding the following fiscal year '25 fiscal obligations that were not received in time to be processed in the normal fiscal year '25 business cycle. Learn Well Vendor $60, Porter Melissa $799.99. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to authorize the school department to pay these previous year school bills totaling $859.99.
Finance committee, please.
Six, I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Wastewater, Thomas Hayes, regarding the purchase of a John Deere 325G compact track loader. The wastewater department has been in need of a replacement slope mower for several years. The slope mower is used to maintain the slopes and swales of the three existing capped landfills and current working landfill. A compact track loader with a cutting deck has been selected for this purpose. A replacement slope mower is included in the fiscal year 2026 to 2030 capital improvements program. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $100,000 from account 6000-578380, Wastewater Enterprise Fund Reserve for Capital, to account 6000-587011, Wastewater Enterprise Fund, Skid steer.
Public Works committee, please.
Seven, I've received a recommendation from the evaluation committee for the Highland Senior Housing Project about the lease for development of the 5.496 acre parcel at Highland Park, identified as Assessor's Platte Number 115, Lot 1B. I am very grateful to purchasing assistant Carol Brown for preparing the RFP and helping to facilitate the evaluation process. Many thanks as well to each of the evaluation team members, Director of Budget and Administration, Mason Lord, Director of Planning and Development, Gary Aragian, Council on Aging Director Kelly Lee, Economic Development Director Chris McDermott, and Community Development Director Emily Miller for their time and expertise. As you may recall, by vote taken on November 7th, 2024, your honorable body conditionally declared this property available for disposition by lease based on my proposal that it be developed into a senior apartment building with an interior space of appropriate size to be used for the city for senior community activities, programs, and events. In the absence of a fully executed ground lease agreement dated no later than December 31st, 2025, this conditional declaration of availability will expire on January 1st, 2026 unless the council votes to approve an extension. Because this was the city's first experience with a ground lease and housing development of this sort, the preparation of the request for proposals, RFP, took more time than it is typically needed and was released on February 26th, 2025. I'm happy to report that when the RFP period closed in July 21st, 2025, the city had received four proposals to develop the property. As the attached memo indicates, after conducting a very thorough and comprehensive evaluation of the proposals, that included interviewing two of the proposing teams in accord with the requirements of Chapter 30B of the Massachusetts General Laws, the evaluation committee has concluded that Neighbor Works Housing Solutions provided the most advantageous proposal to the city. Neighbor Works is well known in the Commonwealth as a leading nonprofit developer of the affordable homes for families, veterans, people with disabilities, and formerly homeless individuals and families. Understanding that this project is of great significance and interest to the community and respecting the conditional nature of the council's declaration, I respectfully request a public hearing be scheduled for November 18th, 2025, to allow the city and Neighbor Works to make a full presentation to the council and the public about this very exciting proposal. Further, to ensure a thorough and fair review of the Neighbor Works proposal and to allow time for the preparation and legal review of a ground lease agreement, including council approval and execution of said agreement should be, should the proposal be selected, I respectfully request no less than a six-month extension of the January 1st, 2026 expiration date for the declaration of availability. Lastly, pursuant to Section 2-11.6 of the revised ordinances, I respectfully request the honorable municipal council to select Neighbor Works Housing Solutions as the party with whom the city enter into a lease for the development 5.496 acre Highland Lot Number 1B property, subject to a ground lease agreement to be approved by the municipal council prior to execution.
It's going to go to the finance committee and Councilor Tavares, a U.D.
Second, then, on that. I am the third member. I'm the only member here.
Yes, I was second, right. So would you like to call for a public hearing on November 18th?
Yes.
Second. Motion is in order. Any comments? Seeing none, this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Councilor Tavares.
Eight, I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Public Works, Michael Tyler, regarding the need for funds for metal materials and hardware to fabricate a new grate to replace the old fencing surrounding the dam at least pond. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $2,045 from account 11241000-578300, Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer, to account 14201000-553010, Public Works Supplies Street Maintenance.
Public Works committee, please.
Nine, I respectfully submit a communication from Office Manager Sharon Fortune regarding a rental agreement with LHS Associates for the use of necessary pole pads for the 2026 elections. LHS Associates has asked the city to reserve the three pole pads by the end of November 2025 to ensure we will have the equipment available for the 2026 elections, since their inventory runs out quickly and we cannot perform early voting without this equipment. In accordance to Section 5-8 Lease/Lease Purchase Agreement, the revised ordinances of the city of Atterboro, I hereby request your honorable body to approve a 12-month lease agreement with LHS Associates.
It's going to go to ordinances, elections, and legislative matters, please.
And, I respectfully submit a communication from Atterboro Public Schools Director of Finance, Brittany Perella, regarding the following fiscal year '25 fiscal obligations that were not received in time to be processed in the normal fiscal year '25 business cycle. American Tire Distributors $1,208.16. American Tire Distributors $174.98. American Tire Distributors $24.54. B&amp;R E-Rate Consulting Services $9,718.82. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to authorize the school department to pay the previous year school bills totaling $11,126.50.
Finance committee, please.
Eleven, I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Budget and Administration, Mason Lord, regarding the need to pay a fiscal '25 invoice to Flowbird America Incorporated in the amount of $140. A vote authorizing payment is needed to satisfy this debt. There is no transfer of funds needed to pay this bill, as there is sufficient funding in Fund 2602.
Finance committee, please.
Twelve, I respectfully submit a communication from the Director of Recreation, Kristi Clausen, regarding the need for funds for upgrades to the Bartek Recreation Center. The upgrades include replacement of the aging boiler, a full lighting upgrade, and an installation of VRF split systems for cooling the gymnasium and office areas. The total cost reflects the contractor's net of rebate cost for the lighting, VRF, and a boiler upgrade, plus an estimated 15% contingency. There is currently $9,045 remaining in this fund from the previous roof repair contingency. If council allows its use, the funding request would be $240,955. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate $240,955 from account 1000-35900, Citywide Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government, to fund 3504 Bartek Center. Additionally, I hereby request your honorable body approve the use of $9,045 left in contingency from the roof repair project in Fund 3504 Bartek Center. In order for this project to qualify for rebates, the VRF portion of the project must be contracted and commenced by December 31st, 2025. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to consider this matter as soon as possible to allow for the contracts to be signed.
Public Works committee, please.
Thirteen, as you know, consistent and informative communication is important to the functioning of government. In particular, updates on the city's revenues and expenditures help ensure the council and the public have timely information, which to make better informed financial decisions. Accordingly, attached, please find Quarterly Budget Updates Memos from Director of Budget and Administration, Mason Lord. Please note that these memos include a summary of fiscal year '25 free cash, retained earnings uses, and an initial plan for the use of free cash in the remainder of fiscal year 2026 reference. Sincerely, Kathleen D. Simone, Mayor.
Thank you. It's going to go to the finance committee. And Councilor Tavares, as an FYI, I'm going to ask that, we are the only representative of your committee this evening, I will talk with Councilor Cobus and Councilor Reynolds. I would like Ms. Mason Lord to come down in front of the council to give a full presentation on, really so we can ask questions and be aware of what exactly the asks in that plan will be. That's going to go to the finance committee. Sincerely.
I'd be ready.
Yep, we'll go into the clerk's communication now, please.
I didn't hear yet.
I snuck it right in at the end. Clerk's Communication, November 4th. We've received 26 Class 2 renewal license applications.
License committee, please.
We have received two Class 3 renewal applications.
License committee, please.
We have received three Class 1 renewal applications.
License committee, please.
We have received an amusement arcade license application.
Any guesses?
Chuck E. Cheese Entertainment.
License committee.
We have received an amusement arcade license application from Demua's Supermarkets, doing business as Market Basket, for one carousel and one mini truck ride.
License, please. Okay.
We have received a new Class 2 license application from Route 1 Automotive Incorporated, 883 Washington Street, with 10 customer parking spaces, 55 display spaces, and storage for 48.
That's going to be a license committee as well. Councilor Lavoy, would you like to call for a public hearing on 12:25? We will do that.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. That's it for the clerk's communication. We will now go into committee reports, and we will be siding with Councilor Foa.
The ITN Infrastructure Committee has never spoken before to the special committee on rules and regulations.
Thank you very much. Councilor Lavoy.
Thank you, reporting for the license committee from the docket of November 4th, 2025. I move to approve a renewal, Class 2 license renewal, from Joe &amp; Mary Inc., doing business as Gas Plus at 80 Pleasant Street, with 10 customer spaces and 24 display spaces. Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
I know, believe we touched on it all in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of October 21st, 2025, I move to approve the renewal of a Class 2 license for Car Town USA Inc. at 680 Washington Street, with nine customer spaces and 20 display spaces. Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
Again, I believe we touched on it all in committee.
Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you. That concludes the business for the license committee, and I call for the committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
I will recognize Councilor Foa to call for a committee meeting for city property.
City property and claim, no business this evening. Call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Vice President Dolan.
Thank you. Public Works totally has no business this evening. Call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Councilor Holmes.
Thank you, reporting for Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee from the docket of November 4th, 2025. I move to transfer $15,000 from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Police Professional Services.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
We just discussed it in committee.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Foa.
Councilor Foa.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
Yes.
Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Tavares.
Yes.
President Delicio.
Yes.
Nine ayes and zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
That concludes the business, and we'll call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Councilor Angelo.
Thank you, President Delicio, reporting for Human Resources and Veterans Committee from the docket of October 21st, 2025. I move to transfer $1,000 from account Animal Control Holiday Vacation Sick Overtime to account Animal Prior Year Article 22 stipend.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
No, sir. We just discussed them already.
Madam Assistant Clerk, I'd like to do a roll call vote on this, please.
Sure.
And that will start with Mr. Tavares.
Mr. Tavares. Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Vice President Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy.
Yes.
Ms. Foa.
Yes.
President Delicio.
Yes.
We have nine ayes and zero nays. Thank you. Motion passes.
That's all for Human Resources and Veterans Committee. Call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Councilor Sawyer.
There's no business for doning land use and sustainability committee, and I call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Councilor Waterman.
Traffic and transportation is no business this evening. We'll meet at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Councilor Tavares.
There's no business for ordinances, elections, and legislative matters. We call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you, Councilor Tavares.
There is no business for the special committee for tax abatement review. We call for a committee at the next appropriate time.
One more time. Councilor Tavares.
And for the special committee to investigate the water loss of 2024, there is no business. We call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
And, sir. And Councilor Angelo.
There is no business for compensation classification. Call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Very good. Before we adjourn this already extremely long meeting, I apologize for the length, we don't have a meeting next week, so, because of an observance of Veterans Day, so I'm thinking that I'll call for committee meetings for the 12th, which is next Wednesday, and then for those who can't make that, we can call for a meeting before, committee meetings before the 18th. I think the 18th is going to be a pretty long meeting, if I'm being honest, we have several public hearings, so if we can make the 12th work, I think that makes sense, but if not, I fully understand, so that's my plan at this point. Okay. Assistant Clerk Katie, thank you so much for everything. And that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 7:08. Before we adjourn this already extremely long meeting, I apologize for the length, we don't have a meeting next week, so, because it's in observance of Veterans Day, so I'm thinking that I'll call for committee meetings for the 12th, which is next Wednesday, and then for those who can't make that, we can call for a meeting before, committee meetings before the 18th. I think the 18th is going to be a pretty long meeting, if I'm being honest, we have several public hearings, so if we can make the 12th work, I think that makes sense, but if not, I fully understand, so that's my plan at this point. Okay. Assistant Clerk Katie, thank you so much for everything. And that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourned at 7:08.